Looks like we're just about met together. Looks like we're all back. So for our working lunch, we'll be hearing from General Government and Internal Services from Mr. Munn. And how do you say your name?
Lisa Takich.
Ms. Takich, thank you.
Yeah, and appreciate the opportunity to present and kick us off with General Government and Internal Services today. I'm Lisa Takich. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. I started with the county back in October and think this is a great growth opportunity for me to try my hand at budget presentations. I have the clicker. Thank you. Yes. I can get the clicker to work. There we go. And so Mr. Munn did a fantastic job in setting the stage for internal services, how they're funded, and talking about the cost allocation plan. So I'm going to pick up from there. And this first slide is, shows a listing of all the internal services that comprise these funds. They're reflected here. I'm not going to get into details of each one of them at this time. They'll be independently and individually spoken to in future slides. There we go. So just broadly and generally, looking at internal equity considerations for internal services in this proposed budget, they're similar to the ones you've heard throughout this presentation because the internal service budgets are primarily comprised of personnel and professional services costs. We don't have a lot of capital investments or anything of that nature. The reductions are really to those lines and you'll see will include vacant FTEs, funding for professional service contracts, employee training and development lines, and some language access. I'll start us off with human resources. I have provided this slide of human resources, which is an internal support service department. The organizational chart is intended to demonstrate the restructuring of the department to align with the One Washington County vision and design the future principles. It's to deliver leading edge HR services to county departments. You'll know in this org chart, there's the addition of a deputy chief human resources officer position, which was created by reclassifying a manager position and was funded with existing budget. The deputy CHRO oversees the hire-to-retire employee lifecycle, promoting collaboration between the talent acquisition or, you know, the function that does our hiring, employee and labor relations. So that would be investigating complaints, supplying policy, guiding supervisors and managers on personnel-related matters, and learning and development. And learning development is employee training essentially countywide. So those are the functional areas underneath the deputy CHRO and the remaining functions, which would include our classification and compensation systems, our pay plan, the different positions and how they're structured around the county, benefits and leave administration. I think that's self-explanatory. Business systems is all the data and the human resources information systems that run in the background that support our internal department. That's business systems. And then risk management, which is a division of HR. Those will still continue to report up to my position, the Chief Human Resources Officer. And a little bit more about what we do. Human resources is funded, and as Greg had explained, with the new cost allocation plan, those funds were funded under 536. And you'll find HR starts on page 105 of your budget book. Human resources department provides support to all county departments. And so we're centralized and provide services to each department with their HR needs. And as I stated, risk management is a division within HR, and it's responsible for employee safety and managing the county's insurance program. And this includes the administration of all of the county's liability, property, and workers' compensation claims. And within this 536 budget, you'll notice that HR revenues are up approximately 531,000. That's about 6% from the previous year. About 281 of that is an increase in the internal cap revenue that HR receives from other departments. And it also includes 250,000 transfer from the SIP fund for a one-time cost for conducting a classification and compensation study this next budget cycle. And that's an ad package that was included in the proposed budget. As previously covered in slide 52 in the chart, you'll notice that the HR budget for 2425 shows that our personnel expenditures increased total of about 385,000, which is about 6%. And that's due to the COLA increases that are expected, retirement costs and healthcare benefits. The increase is partially offset by the elimination in the budget reduction scenario of 3% of a 1.0 FTE, human resources analyst two position. That's currently vacant. And also a 1.0 FTE intern position, which is also vacant. Those two positions combined are about 226,000 of the reduction. In addition to the, to round up to the 3% reduction scenario in this proposed budget, there were some cuts to the reductions to the employee training and certification budget lines totaling about 16,000 between risk management and HR combined. So our total reductions in the 3% scenario is about 242,500. The ad package I spoke of and the amount of 250,000 through that SIP transfer, that's included in the proposed budget. Again, funding a vendor to help support conducting the classification compensation study for all county positions. I'll speak a little bit more about this in the next two slides. I'd like to talk a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish in HR. Since I've come on board, we refer to it as HR transformation. I spoke earlier of the restructuring of the HR department. And the reason for doing that is really one of the strategies we're trying to implement is looking at our delivery of HR services and that we're doing so in alignment with the One Washington County vision and design the future principles. Our talented HR staff are working to create consistency of process. We're looking at our county policies and procedures to ensure that employees and managers across the county receive similar HR guidance, and we're hopeful for similar outcomes for employees. In addition to ensuring personnel matters are conducted in a consistent matter or consistent manner with state, federal, local laws, we still have that compliance end, we're trying to balance that with focusing on the employee experience with the understanding that navigating personnel matters can be very stressful and often confusing. Our efforts are centering on creating transparency in our processes and infusing human-centered practices in our procedures by providing employees with information, resources, as well as approaching these matters using a trauma-informed lens. The proposed budget supports these efforts in alignment also with the board's recently adopted strategic plan update. The HR work plan that will come under that will include initiatives to support investing in county employees through a learning and development program, developing and implementing a countywide supervisor and leadership learning cohorts. So that's something we hope to achieve in this coming year. It includes previously mentioned classification compensation study. And really, the intent of that study is to look at the county's pay plan to make sure it's sustainable for future years, that it's equitable for employees, and especially in light of our need to remain competitive in this really tough candidate market right now, that our salaries are competitive, that we remain an employer of choice, and that we can also do so within our ongoing budget constraints. So looking at the equity considerations within HR in this proposed budget, this final slide for HR discusses those considerations. The ad package that I spoke of for class comp study, it really does support equity. The scope of the study will impart, examine, and take a look at job descriptions and classifications around the county. And we're going to look at the minimum qualifications, like what do you need at a base level to apply and qualify for a job? So looking at years of experience, education, certifications, things of that nature, and looking at them to see if they present arbitrary barriers to employment with the county. An example would be, I think, all of our job descriptions require a high school education or a GED. That'd be a very simplified example. And we'll take a second look at pay equity to evaluate whether the results of the study are in alignment with legislation. And some of you may be familiar with the Oregon Equal Pay Act legislation. There will be negative impacts in this proposed budget to equity. We expect to see them with the reduction of the staffing capacity. And while those impacts will create some barriers to forwarding equity, they don't negate the net advancement of equity entirely. HR is currently working on a number of initiatives. It will continue to support equity. And what I want to share with you today is that our excellent work that the HR staff is doing, this current proposed budget will impact really the rate of progress, I would feel. I like to say that we're in the forever business in local government. The work never ends. And so it's really about when will we be able to accomplish the things that we're seeking to do. And so we'll just reprioritize the important work and support the county departments the best we can with the resources provided. So moving on to, this kind of continues some of the conversations-
Could I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you for all that information. It's very helpful to see all the initiatives you have. I was curious to ask, as you are evaluating every year, you're probably looking at your benefits and what you're offering, what the cost is in the marketplace, as well as insurance with the broker probably to do that. Can you talk about with benefits, what you're observing in the marketplace, where costs are rising in benefits? Because we're hearing a lot about rising labor costs, and a lot of people assume that's probably coming mostly from salaries because there's, you know, a lot more wage pressure in a growth area like Washington County. But a big part of it also is benefits, and a lot of that is what we, a choice of what we offer to give to employees for benefits, but also just a rise in the cost of benefits. I'm wondering what you, just your observations while you're seeing in the market.
Yes. And so your question is spot on. And in, not this slide, but the next one, I'm actually going to talk about the benefits program because it is one of the insurance funds. And if I could put a pin in your question, so then I'd be happy to answer those questions. Any others regarding HR before I move on to insurance?
I could be remembering this wrong, but I thought when we first came in, I don't know if it was 19 or 20, I thought we had a study on, what'd you call it, wage equalization? What's the terminology?
The Oregon Equal Pay Act.
Yeah. I thought we had that, and we came up pretty well in that. Did-
Yes. And so that study, that study did occur, and we created a salary matrix that when salaries are set, we compare the qualifications under Oregon Equal Pay to that matrix, and it identifies what the appropriate salary would be that would be equitable. And so we've implemented that. And what I suspect with the classification compensation study is that we're going to be looking at the grouping of classifications, the type of work, if we change minimum qualifications, we might have to revisit the Oregon Equal Pay Act to ensure that any changes to our pay plan or classifications is still consistent with Oregon Equal Pay. So we might have to do some tweaking.
So we need to, so I look at class comp as a two-edged sword. So are we getting a sense that we are not keeping up in that arena, that we're willing to spend this kind of money for a study? I guess class comp studies always feel good, but they are also not only expensive to pay for, but they're expensive to implement.
So Lisa, can I just jump in? And then I'd like you to piggyback on, with your HR expertise. So the last time our class and comp, comprehensive class comp study was conducted was well over 20 years ago. And so concerns on our current classification compensation is a frequent concern expressed by many, if not most, of our departments across the county. And Washington County has, works under a job classification system without job descriptions. This is incredibly important foundational work that we need to develop within HR. So the Oregon Equal Pay Act, yes, that study was conducted. That study was conducted and overlaid on frankly, a not updated class and comp structure. And so we're seeing challenges through our hiring process. And while the intent of Oregon Equal Pay Act is good, there are some challenges with placing that study over outdated class and comp structure. And this is a concern from our departments. I will say, even though we are in a cut situation in reality here, this expenditure was, is well supported by all of the department directors, knowing the various challenges that we have in our current class and comp structure. But Lisa, I'd like you to add to that.
Yeah, thank you. And some of the things that we're noticing is that, so we do have some unionized groups. Their contracts are negotiated separately than what nonrepresented salaries and how they're established. And so what we're starting to see with some of the aggressive bargaining, and then also, I guess, the aggressive bargaining that's occurring, that there's compression, and they're starting to creep up on what their supervisors are making. And so then we're hearing from the supervisors, and it has this cascading effect. The county's grown so significantly, you know, in the last five years, I would say at least, and the types of positions, the new classifications to support, like our expanding services in some areas, housing is a really good example with, you know, the Housing Authority, you know, coming into the county. We didn't have a lot of those types of positions before. And so we're creating new positions, and we haven't done a comprehensive study to see how they fit within the overall structure and pay plan. So I look at this study as information. A study provides us an analysis that we can take back and have, you know, collaborative discussions, and then make decisions on what we want to do with the results of that study. And some of that I would expect would be, you know, our compensation philosophy. Where do we want to be in the market? Where are we seeing, is it small changes, large changes in certain areas? You know, I think in some areas, we might be trailing, and others, we might be ahead of the market because of some of the kind of ad hoc changes we've been making over the years. So I think you can look at it as a good reset as well, and get a handle on our compensation structure and move forward. I hope not. Best practice is once every five years.
Well, let's pin it off of that first. Ms. Angie and Ms. Takich, generally, how frequently does an organization of our size update its class and comp system?
So a full compensation study, which we intend to do, which would be looking at every position and comparing it to market, that occurs, I would, at a minimum, every five years.
Okay. So this is a mix of things, to use the board's vocabulary. This is another foundational piece that we're investing in because the system that we have is older and is missing some necessary things. Like in order to have a good career ladder and career management system, part of that is having job descriptions. And we don't have job descriptions for everything. So we have to fill those holes and get this major piece in place. But at the same time, part of what Lisa described, excuse me, Ms. Takich described, is modernizing some of our policies relating to that as well. So we'll be doing both. This is, this is a really wonderful program investment that we're making with this budget year.
Yeah. And Sheriff, if I may expound on an excellent point about it being foundational work, is that it also ties into the ERP. And so the implementation of Workday, the information that we're putting into it, the, I'll use the term garbage in, garbage out. It's kind of a common vernacular with ERP systems. And so we want to make sure we're putting in the best and updated information because the whole system, you know, it's an integrated system, and it all revolves around the positions at the county, how they're constructed, and how they're paid. So I think there's an added benefit to support that project as well. Any other questions? This is good conversation. I appreciate it. All right. I'm going to move on to insurance funds. So these are fiscal entities that you heard from, most of them from Mr. Munn before the lunch break. And these insurance funds are fiscal entities that I guess can sit, and the oversight is within HR and is tied to HR operations. And so we're going to cover them here. Let's see. So in your budget books, and I'm actually going to skip forward. I like the order of starting with slide 59 better. I think it'll make a little more sense as we talk about self-insured programs. So the liability fund is, all of these, I guess, would be, you can find them in your budget book, starting on page 376 to 381. They're all encompassed in there. I'd like to cover the liability fund first. And so let me make sure I know where I am now with all this conversation. There we go. So Fund 504 is the liability and casualty insurance fund, and it pays for costs associated with insurance premiums, claim costs, and administrative charges for claims under the county's self-insurance program. Expenditures are expected to increase by 6% this fiscal year. Funding levels are based on an actuarial analysis. And a short explanation about what this is, for those that aren't familiar, it's a method of determining funding. Claims have, they're not, they don't start and end within one fiscal year. They continue on, and they grow and develop. And so the county's insurance program, since we're self-insured, what that means is that we pay dollar-for-dollar claim costs up until a determined retention threshold. And once we meet, which fortunately is rarely, that threshold, claims costs then roll over and are reimbursed by an excess insurance policy. So we have this layer of retention, and then an excess that sits over. And so the funding levels, we use actuarial report to determine how to fund that retention level. And essentially, we send our about 10 years of loss runs to an actuary, and the study is really one that determines, looks at losses using a probability theory and other methods of statistical analysis to determine what claims will cost over time. And so they look at how they develop, they look at past development to determine future development. And then with partnering with the finance department, we determine funding levels for this. And so the drivers behind increased costs, that 6% that I referred to, is really a combination of the nature of the types of claims we're seeing, a shift in societal norms. So there's factors that influence claims and what we pay out in claims that are outside the county's control, really. Increase in litigation, we're seeing larger jury verdicts within our region, and also there's inflationary costs of goods and services. And so Fund 504, in addition to that self-insured fund, it covers the other lines of the county's insurance, and that includes the property, the cyber liability, fiduciary, all of our other insurance lines. And so jumping back then to slide 58, similarly, our workers' compensation fund is self, we have a self-insured program. The workers' compensation fund is Fund 508, and it pays for premiums, claims costs, administrative costs, and then the payroll taxes for claims that are incurred during the year, and then the continuing liability for prior years, or future years. And similar to the liability fund, workers' comp is also self-insured, and it's also covered through the cost, the cost allocation plan. And what we're projecting is an expenditure reduction due to the actual actuarial forecast showing a reduction in anticipated future payouts. And the reason for this is that the prior years, the expenditures were higher because we'd seen a few catastrophic injury claims. And those claims met that retention level that I spoke of. And so the county's liability ends there, and then our excess insurance picks up over that. And so because they have met the retention, the funding levels normalize, and so we're seeing a reduction this year. And Fund 508, I guess, sorry, Fund 510 is our healthcare insurance fund. And so then getting to the questions regarding healthcare, this fund pays for all of the administrative claim costs and insurance premiums associated with our medical, dental, vision insurance plans. It covers our wellness program and other related employee benefit programs. The overall budgeted expenditures are expected to increase 7%. That is, that could change, and I'll talk about that in a moment, due to continuing rising healthcare costs. The increases aren't unique to the county. While we do have like a loss ratio, we're exceeding 100% right now. And what that means is that the premiums that are earned by the carrier, our losses are exceeding that. So essentially, if you're over 100%, the carrier's losing money on that particular policy. The drivers around that include delayed treatment still from the pandemic. We're seeing people delay treatment, they weren't treating, and then things were discovered later and usually more serious, rather than, you know, early identification and treatment. So we're still seeing that. There's the effect on inflation, really, I would say, pointed in the medical personnel costs and operating costs. We're seeing a lot through the pandemic where, remember when, during the pandemic with the burnout with medical professionals and particularly with nursing staff, and then they were leaving the industry, and then to fill those vacancies, they were hiring contracted nurses. And they were being paid at a rate of three times what a normal salary would be. And then, you know, of course, to even that out with those that are directly on the payroll. And so we saw these, like, big inflations with personnel costs, and that's continuing. And then, as I stated, the operating costs, especially with facilities. And so those are the drivers. It's a combination of things. It's nationwide. Our counterparts in the area are experiencing the same effects. And we do talk about what their renewals are looking like. And so last year, and continuing this year, the county is working very closely with our healthcare broker to find strategies to reduce those costs, but still remain competitive in the benefits that we offer. And so last year, it included a new plan. We call it like our high, high deductible plan that had any sort of AVBA associated with it. And so that helped reduce the costs. And so we're going to take another look at that. The Kaiser Plan didn't prove to be as desirable as we had initiated. The Providence one did pretty good with employees transferring over to it. So we're going to look at that. One of the other drivers is specialty prescription medications. And I would, when you look at our loss runs, it's not so much the, like, inpatient or surgeries or chronic illnesses. Specialty drugs is one where we really need to look at and get a, get a handle on. And then the, I would say, one of the conversations we're having too is there's a demand for the weight loss drugs. They're very expensive. It's a specialty drug, and how we're going to handle that. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yep. Very good. All right. And yes.
Yeah, there was a lot in that.
Yeah.
Because we know this is a very expensive area of fringe benefits. So I'm looking at the workers' comp insurance. It looks like we were able to reduce that cost. It'd be interesting to know, is that just on experience-based things? So our experience is improving, got better? Or is it because we negotiated some other deal?
So the cost of insurance is rising. And so that's, that's, it'll be a big answer. So bear with me. It's, because it is complicated. So there is the cost through the retention level. And then, you know, we have to have that excess layer above, which we have two carriers that will, will write for us because of the presumptive illnesses for public safety and justice that we're seeing, that legislation that presumes particularly, excuse me, post-traumatic stress disorder as work-related unless the employer can prove it otherwise. So the burden is shifted to the, to the employer. Usually, it's the injured worker that has to prove beyond a preponderance of evidence that their claim is related to their work activities. And so those claims are very costly, and carriers are starting to back out a public agency business, and they're not writing those policies. So we essentially have two that will cover us, and the cost is rising. That said, within the retention level, the loss experience that you spoke of, that is, I think we're, we're trending static, but we had that blip in previous years because of the two catastrophic claims where we met the retention level. So depending on which department those claims arise out of, it's our retention level is 1 million per claim. So we hit that retention. And so when you're paying out a million, you know, within a fiscal year, that's, I guess it would be over several years, depending on, on- guess it would be over several years, depending on how the costs land within our fiscal year. So it's a combination of factors, but now that those claims, while still paying out and there's care for the employee being provided, and, you know, payments made to them for their wages, it's in the excess layer now, and so we're being reimbursed. So our costs are trending downward this year, and then it's to be seen how new claims will affect the future. Yeah. Yes, and so there's raising the premium, and then also raising the retention level, and we've seen that as well, I mean, it's gone from 750 to a million to 1.25, yeah. We're really beholden, because there's not many, yeah.
Lisa, if I understand correctly, what you're saying by self-insured is, anything below the retention level or deductible, the county is paying out of pocket for those claims?
Correct.
And then you have excess liability insurance that covers anything above that retention level, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Another question I have is, I heard this, this might be a little bit off-topic a little bit, but I heard this fascinating podcast about, just this week, about, due to climate change, there's a lot of carriers exiting the business of property insurance, because there's just a lot more volatility with weather that's causing damage in places that they can't be sustainable for profitability in parts of the country that you wouldn't expect. Are you observing any of that in Oregon here?
That, that affects the whole insurance market. Carriers don't write just one line, you'll have, they do business in property, they do business in casual, casualty, et cetera. And so that's what we're, we've been seeing this probably for the last 10 years with the big cat losses, you know, with all the hurricanes, flooding, all of that.
Wildfires.
Wildfires, they're pulling out of the less, the less profitable lines, and refocusing, right? And so that's how the market of who our available carriers are is narrowing. And then costs are increasing, and even with the property cat losses, because if they're running in the red on that, they're going to try to recoup some of the money from the liability side. And you see liability go up just because, even though your claims might look good, you're still paying increased premiums because they're, you know, trying to, you know, break even at least, or come above. And we're seeing that, I would say, what's pertinent for the county, considering where we are in the Pacific Northwest, it's the earthquake and land movement coverage. And so we're seeing increased costs on that coverage, but also they're reducing the level of insurance we can provide, so usually those are sublimits, and they have separate limits. So all of our property would be covered for your typical perils of fire, et cetera, you know, at the costs, cost for replacement, but for EQ, it's substantially limited. So if we had multiple buildings damaged, we would have to probably, you know, in the big catastrophic earthquake, we'd probably have to prioritize repair.
Just one more question on that, and I think, from my standpoint, that's why my personal insurance is going up like 25% every year, is because we're paying for everything in the Midwest and the East and everything else, so it wouldn't bother me a bit that they would get out of that section of the country, and maybe we wouldn't have to pay for it. But as far as workers' comp, and we talked about a couple of large claims, things like that, do we, do we negotiate that internally? I mean, does our legal department take care of any claims of workers' comp, or do we outsource that?
So we have a third-party administrator that adjusts our claims and does the day-to-day adjusting, and then we have an analyst within HR that is the liaison between the departments, our third-party administrator, and county council is also a partner in the conversation, especially when claims are contested in some fashion, and, you know, they escalate through, I'll call it, you know, litigation in general terms. And there is a risk committee, so if there is ever a settlement, and this is holds true for workers' comp board liability claim, if there is a settlement considered, then we have a risk committee that includes one of the assistant county administrators, the risk manager, and county council. And we have a discussion, and then that's usually, depending on the, the level, you know, the decision-making authority, and sometimes obviously that comes to you in executive session.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. The last slide should be pretty quick. The last two insurance funds are Funds 506, and that's for our life insurance, collects and pays for funds, pays for life and long-term disability insurance premiums for employees, and then Fund 510 is for unemployment insurance, it collects funds from departments to pay unemployment claims, and on these, no notable changes, they're usually pretty static. And so that concludes the review of Human Resources Department budget and the fiscal funds for insurance related to our operations, and I'll turn the presentation back over to Mr. Munn, who will continue the review of our general government internal services.
Before, do you have a question?
Quick question, Lisa, for these insurance programs like life insurance and a few others, do we have retired employees participating in those as well?
Ooh, that's a good question. In my seven months here, I don't know that specific detail. Yeah, I don't know. It could be, I don't know that we do, though. I think there's an opportunity that once you separate, you can carry the insurance at your own, at your own cost.
Or there might be a state program that they're participating in, or something. Okay. Can, quick question back to, I guess, Tanya and Craig, is there anywhere in the budget book a list of headcount by department? I'm just curious, like, can we see like total headcount in the county by department, or FTE equivalent?
Page 429.
Page 429.
429.
Okay, thank you.
And then just a couple more pages after that.
Yes, so long-term disability is when an employee's out for a serious health condition. I think our elimination period is 90 days, they can apply for long-term disability, and then it would be, you know, a payment, you know, to help support, it's like a salary replacement. I'll have to check, I don't know the, I apologize for not knowing the specifics as to how it applies. Yes, and I think it, I'd have to check to see how ours is constructed, but usually there's a, there's a cap.
Before you leave, I just want to say thank you very much. Seven months is not a long time to be here, you did a great job in this, and you are also really leading the charge around modernization of our HR systems and the work in collaboration with the other departments. I've had the opportunity to work with you, and I really appreciate the fact that you bring to us such a strong skill set around HR-related issues, but also around other issues that function within that area. So congratulations on your first budget presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your kind words.
Yeah, if, I can just add on, from a county administrator perspective, Lisa is a member of our executive leadership team. Human resources is an incredibly important function at the county. Jeff, Jeff, you lifted up FTE, but we talked about insurance here, and we need to be ensuring that we retain and attract the best quality public servants here at Washington County. And so that means, and Lisa talked about life cycle, we need to look at that full life cycle for our employees moving forward. So I'm just thrilled with the progress we're making, and there's a lot more work ahead. I also want to just add a bit more context to your question, Jeff, on FTE. So we lifted up the permanent positions are on page 429. Those are only permanent positions, then, by department. I also want to refer you to page 41 of your budget document. On 41, that outlines the eliminated positions and frozen positions. Through, so through the budget presentations, different areas have lifted up elimination or frozen, so that's where you'll find that listing.
And, Tanya, if I could also point out that, if you go back to page 431, and you look at, because if you look at the total numbers, 2,578 versus 2,394, it looks like we have significantly amped up. I think the majority of that is in Health and Human Services, and that is SHS positions. So those are specific, it's not like we have exponentially increased our headcount number across the board or in any particular area, that's, that's our SHS money kicking in.
Money in those positions.
Correct. But not 130 positions.
I'll bring you the clicker.
Let's go to page 99, and we should be on slide number 61. There we go. Give you a second to get there.
Good one without a writer?
Most of the time. All right, so the finance department budget is shown on page 99. The FY '25 budget includes 25 FTE, which is a reduction of one limited-duration position that sunsets at the end of this fiscal year. So we go from 26 to 25, and that's planned. I'd point your attention to the org chart up on the screen here, the dark brown boxes in this grouping here are managers of functions in the finance department, including our procurement function, all the way to the right-hand side, and then as you move left, there's budget, budget office, and then our operations, which is kind of down in the middle, and those are the folks that pay our employees every two weeks, and pay the bills, and collect our cash receipts, and then also help manage our investment portfolio. And you continue, move to the left, is the accounting operations, these are the folks that do our debits and credits, make sure they stay on the right side, work with our auditors to audit our financial, and put together our ACFER, which is our annual financial report, which we've received the GFOA award for 30-some years, I should know this, 36 years, I think. And then, further to the left, is our grants management function, and really that's the ARPA work, the reporting side of the ARPA grant function that's housed in finance right now. In addition to that, all the way to the left is the team of people that are playing such a vital role as we move into the ERP. And the reason for this is that these folks have come in early, they've learned some of our jobs, and will be backfilling the work of the other folks in the organization while they go work on the trans, the implementation of the new ERP system. So, it's, and then that will fade out after the ERP is implemented. So we have seven folks there that have become really a part of the team, and are going to hopefully make this transition into the new ERP as smooth as possible. So in addition to the regular daily activities and gearing up for the ERP implementation, the team is busy with several improvement projects, including the implementation of financial reporting software, which is moving from a spreadsheet-based, PDF-based financial reporting software to a dedicated software that is best practice. Evaluating a new TLT software, right now we receive TLT from all of the taxpayers that pay TLT taxes in the county, and we keep track of that on a spreadsheet. And so, as you can imagine, that there's different ways to do that, so we're looking at both a program that's operated, offered to the state, and also some best-practice softwares out there to improve the, it will improve the work we do, and it will reduce the amount of work that we have to do. Operationalizing the county's capital improvement planning process, the CIP, we'll talk about that here in a minute. Creating county fiscal policies, we finished one, or on track over the next 12 months to finish another seven, and to continue to bid, to work on our budget redesign initiatives to build a sustainable general fund budget in the long run.
So it is quite odd, sitting next to Mr. Munn and me pulling the mic away from him as he's talking, but I want to actually touch base on this slide a bit more, because I think, I'll just say, I think you're underselling the work that the finance department delivers. Last year, and this was during the transition of an interim CFO, came to my attention, we had only one person processing payroll. That's like not a good situation. So this budget committee recommended, and the board ultimately approved an adaptive budget, so we now have a backup to payroll. This finance team is extremely lean, this is feedback that I receive on an annual basis from our financial auditor, waved that cautionary flag. But I want to underscore our technology systems, moving away from paper and PDFs, Excel spreadsheets is incredibly important, because those systems are based on current employee knowledge and expertise. When there's transitions, we're unable to have a seamless transition of that information, which could result in errors and risk up to audit findings ultimately. So I just want to underscore how important that software transition is to the solvency of the fiscal state of Washington County.
Thank you. Okay, and just one more quick slide, just to give you an overview on the budget. So overall, the revenue to the Finance Internal Service Fund is up by 8%, which is primarily driven by a 6% increase in the cost allocation plan charges, you'll see that on the page there. With the 3% contingency previously mentioned, I talked about this earlier, if the contingency was set at 3%, the revenue collected through the cost allocation plan would actually be less next year than it is this year. So we'd actually see a slight reduction in the amount we need to collect from cost allocation plan. We'll end up seeing that next year, as this self-corrects. Expenditures are only up 2%, but this is driven primarily by a reduction in the FTE, the one limited-duration FTE that goes away, and the budget reductions, which include a reclass to an existing FTE, these are budget reductions that we made that are up on the screen, and reductions in overtime, professional services, and a contracting budget. Any questions on finance?
Yes, I do, mostly because I don't know if I'm putting our management team in a difficult position. You've given us a balanced budget, using the techniques that this slide summarizes for this department. Yet I'm very cognizant of the fact that we still have a pretty lean organization. As you said, we're still going through this budget redesign, and we have the ERP implementation. So I'm wondering if we're still at risk of needing to lean into overtime per the process, I'm concerned about burning out, continued burnout in yet another department.
Yeah, thank you for your concern, I can address that. I'm going to just click backwards to the chart here. So you can't see this, but down at the bottom in two or three places, some of the names have a VH next to their title, variable hour. And so what we've been able to do is use, these are retired folks that have come back, and they work just part-time with us, but they have a very unique skill set that goes with part of the software applications that we use that is just not duplicatable. And they're hanging on while we move into the new ERP. So that's one bridge that we have to help us. The other one is, as I mentioned, with that box all the way to the left, those seven folks giving us some breathing room to be able to fully, not just implement, successfully implement it, but fully get the use out of the new ERP system. Which, there's a third, the box, blue box right up on top in the center there, next to the two brown boxes, one of the new positions we brought in last year, which was a transfer from IT, is a systems administrator position that is somebody who's going to stay on staff with us and and help not just Finance, but HR and the rest of the county fully utilize the new ERP system into the future. There's going to be way more work once the consultants leave than we will be able to get to. And one person is not enough, but it will be the super consultant trainer that can come in and say, "Hey, why don't you try doing it this way? And then, look what we learned from LUT. Let's see if we can do that over here." Or maybe the best solution for a challenge that's presented is just a spreadsheet. Maybe that's it. But somebody who can be our designated hitter that can do that. So that's going to help as well. And my hope and expectation is that moving into the new ERP will reduce some of the pressure on staffing. We'll have to see once we get there. But the concept is let software do the work for you and free up people to do the things that software can't do.
The reductions, the, if you can, oh, I have the clickers right by me. So the Finance budget reductions that you see here, the overtime, professional services, those are areas, I'll put it on the to-watch from a county administrator standpoint. In budget conversations, decision-making, I know that I asked Greg, please come back, you know, if we're starting to see some risks so that we can adjust. So if we start to see some risks, there may be a budget supplemental coming to your, to the Board of Commissioners in between when the Budget Committee meets. But I think we're just having to manage through this. And once again, fortunate that we do have the overfills through the ERP project, too.
Okay. I guess I have the COVID-19 response slide. So this is Fund 155. And let's see if I can find it real quickly in the budget document. Okay, it's page 90. Page 89. Page 89. So a lot, often we, we talk about the COVID-19 Response Fund. We talk about ARPA. And the reason why we do that is because ARPA makes up the lion's share of the dollars that are, that went into and are going into the COVID-19 Response Fund. There is other sources of funds. We have FEMA reimbursements in there. We have CARES Fund from early on with the pandemic that were in that fund. But most of what we talk about now is ARPA, the allocation of ARPA, which is $117 million. It was received over two tranches, so 58 million per tranche. And a couple of restrictions, and some of, most of you may know this, but those dollars need to be fully committed, fully obligated by the end of this December. So we have to have those commitments in place. Additionally, we have two more years till the end of December of 2026 to spend those out. So those are the two guardrails that we're working against. And so part of that is to, the budget is fully budgeted with commitments that the Board has already made and the Budget Committee's seen in the past moving into next year. But as we get closer to that obligation date, we want to make sure we revisit all of our existing commitments that haven't fully been spent yet to make sure that we're going to meet those two dates. And so the Board will be meeting this summer to reevaluate what those, what those are and reallocate those dollars because we want to be able to keep those dollars, put them, keep them in the county and put them to use here without having to give them back. So just a quick overview of ARPA. It has a system in place. It's working, and we're moving in a direction to fully allocate and spend those dollars that were given to us.
Greg, can you remind us what the guardrails are about what the money couldn't be spent for? Are there limitations on where it can be spent? I know, I just-
I got a sigh for me.
Do you like, do you like reading the Federal Register?
No, just high level.
It's really, it's, it's-
And just reading our compliance report.
I assume not hops ballparks.
No, no, no. It's really response to the pandemic, economic recovery. Where that's probably really where we're at now is in economic recovery. It's a long final rule. Yeah, I don't even think you'd like to read it.
From a fiscal position, we've done a lot of work to ensure that any of the FTE that we have hired using these one-time federal dollars are reflected as limited-duration positions within the county, within the community. We have absolutely benefited from this infusion of dollars. And we will see a cliff. And we've already been seeing that cliff within the community, within the county. And so that's just one kind of area for us to be cognizant, that it's coming from a budget standpoint. We have budgeted though, in a manner to ensure that one-time funds are being used for one-time reasons.
And you may hear, you know, just now that you've heard the word ARPA and COVID-19 response and all that, you may hear things in the news about governments dealing with the ARPA cliff. And what that means is the dependency on these ARPA dollars that are going away. So they've been around for a while, but there is definitely a sunset to them coming up.
Do we get the money and we spend it and send them a report?
Yep. No, we get the money.
Extensive, extensive quarterly reports.
We, yeah. In, in May of, I think it's May of '20, we received $58 million. And then in May of '21, we received another $58 million. And that was consistent across counties. Okay.
But if they don't, if they don't like your extensive report, do they ask for money back? Or they just, you just giving them data?
Just, yeah.
But let me put the plug in. We were identified as a small number of counties doing a really good job in this area and provided recognition through Results for America. And then we were like one.
Yeah, I can pick up here. Results for America is a nonprofit association that is funded through Bloomberg Philanthropies. They, we have been in the Results for America cohort. And part of that is they recognize with the CARES funding, so this was pre-ARPA, how the county expended those funds in a data-driven manner and also with an equity lens. And so we benefited through this ARPA time for, with frankly philanthropic technical resources, which has helped our staff on reporting data-driven and also best practices from other governments across the country.
And just not to put you on the spot, honey, but I think you know this answer. How many questions do we currently have funded by ARPA dollars?
How many what?
Positions do we have currently funded by ARPA dollars that will go away at the end of '26?
I don't know that off the top of my head, so I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So not part of the annual budget process or the approval of the budget, but the next slide here is just a quick conversation about the county's capital improvement planning works, efforts. And I know you can't read this graphic. This is just a timeline of the development of the CIP. But what I thought I'd do is just give you an overview because it plays into, this planning work plays into the annual capital budget that comes to the Budget Committee every year and to the Board for adoption. So the five-year, 2024 to 2029 CIP is the second year of a comprehensive countywide plan. The first CIP was approved by the Board last June. The purpose of the CIP is to provide a longer-term plan, one longer than an annual budget, to fund the county's capital asset maintenance and replacement and new assets. The CIP is one element of the Budget Redesign Work Plan that was developed in the summer of 2022. The importance of and the need for the CIP was highlighted later that summer when, when major and immediate facility improvements were identified in some of our most critical areas of the county and as the project to replace the 20-plus-year-old enterprise resource planning system commenced. These two immediate need projects alone are estimated to cost $85 million and without a funding source at the time. The process to develop the CIP will ensure the county is better positioned to future identify, plan for, and fund this work along in advance to ultimately provide consistent and stable services to the community. Additionally, the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association recommends that local, state, and provincial governments establish a system for assessing their capital assets and then appropriately plan for and budget for any capital maintenance and replacement needs. So the CIP builds on the county's first CIP, the one that was just approved, by continuing to focus on transparency, providing more robust details, including funding sources and cost estimates, all the way wrapped in a visually pleasing presentation with updated branding, charts, and consistent project page design. This was a collaborative effort between our technology folks, who spend a lot of capital, our road folks that spend a lot of, spend a lot of money on roads, and of course, these wonderful facilities that we sit in. And we all came together and put this plan together with a lot of all-hands-on-deck work. We don't have an individual place where this is assigned yet. It's kind of a collaborative work at this point, but I thought we'd share that with you, Budget Committee. No, I don't, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but that's certainly a possibility. That's one way to fund for future capital improvements is to have a reserve account. And we haven't, we haven't established that yet in terms of moving, moving forward. But that's part of the planning process. That's why we identified.
One of the key elements that the Board of Commissioners had just heard this last month, I believe, is the county's first-ever Facility Condition Index Report, which is, looks at all of our existing facilities and determines what are the maintenance needs. And I don't have the number in front of me, but the deferred maintenance is significant. So that is one of those numbers from the Facility Component Committee member Rogers to take that and then to help develop that fiscal plan and strategy. And that's on staff's work plan to come back to the Board this fiscal year with what that approach and options could be.
Before you move on, Greg, you mentioned that there were two different projects or categories that combined came to a cumulative total of $85 million. Could you repeat what those were, please?
That was the ERP and the Critical Facilities projects.
Yep. So what the Board just learned through the draft Facility Condition Assessment Information at our work session just this Tuesday or last Tuesday?
Two Tuesdays.
Two Tuesdays ago. Thanks to Laurel Brown and the One Washington County Team's effort, we have some additional large numbers to get our heads around because of the level of deferred maintenance. That Critical Facilities number alone at about $66 million, that was just to keep four buildings open and operating immediately. So imagine the additional deferred maintenance to keep safe buildings open for the community that we serve as well as for the employees who report day in and day out to serve our community. So I am grateful for the One Washington County Team effort in putting together a sound CIP. We had an initial CIP last year, and it's been advanced significantly this year. But we certainly have more work to do. So, thank you.
Good afternoon again, Budget Committee. I'm going to continue Internal Services and talk to you about Emergency Management, which you can find on page 86 of your budget book. Emergency Management prepares Washington County and the community to respond to emergencies through planning, training, exercising, public education and outreach, and coordination with other agencies, the businesses, and public. Emergency Management also coordinates hazard mitigation planning and supports and coordinates the county's emergency response and recovery activities. As has been mentioned by Mr. Munn and others today, in this current fiscal year, Emergency Management was moved to an Internal Service Fund. Previously, it was a general fund organizational unit. Some highlights and changes to Emergency Management is that they're experiencing a decrease in revenue impacted this year by less funds and grants. So they're managing within a little bit less dollars that way. Their budget reduction is in the 3% range. However, we're recommending that the Washington County, or that Washington County maintain the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, or RDPO, membership dues as that's an important multi-jurisdictional organization. The impact of the other reductions means there's about a 65% decrease in training and education, a 41% decrease in travel, and a 31% decrease in communication services that are available. This limits staff availability to participate in emergency management and professional development courses, which can often impact employee retention. This reduction in communication will eliminate the satellite Wi-Fi system service that provides a backup pathway to the internet. The Emergency Management has seen, excuse me, has seen an increase in workload based on events. Even the most recent winter storm quickly became a disaster or a significant event that required coordination and staff time. Some of the most recent program highlights for Emergency Management include the completion of the COVID Response After Action Report. And of course, that was in partnership with other departments and jurisdictions. The completion of the County Disaster Recovery Framework. The completion of the Board of County Commissioners Preparedness Action Plan, which involved four board engagements over the last year, a little bit longer, and other actions to improve the Board's preparedness. The team did substantial work on the Continuity of Operations Planning Program, or our COOP planning, as we call it, by working with every department to identify their essential functions. This initiative will be completed in this next fiscal year, but a lot of good work was done this year involving almost the entire county departments. And then Emergency Management has a formation of a countywide communications working group. New this year, the Emergency Management Cooperative Project Fund balance was transferred to the Emergency Management Budget. And in prior route, prior years, that revenue was maintained separately. Any questions on that?
This is a great idea.
A great idea. Yeah.
And while we have everyone's attention, not just the Budget Committee, but employees who may watch this video of this meeting, we do have a employee-wide Emergency Management Fair coming up in early September. I think it's September 11th and 12th. And more information will be provided on horizons. But as an employer, we want to make sure that everyone has knowledge, both for their work life, but also their personal life for themselves and their families.
Thank you for that mention. I know John Wheeler, Emergency Management Manager, who's listening on Zoom today is cheering. I know he is right now. And thank you for that.
One other comment, Erin. Thank you for mentioning RDPO. Not only do we have, get a great deal from RDPO, we are, through John's leadership, we are a key component of that organization and really set the standard in many cases. So that, that membership is very valuable.
Really important. Thank you.
The reason we wanted to let, thank you, Committee Member Treece. We wanted to raise that up is, you've heard the flag, you've heard me say, "to the bone." We are to the bone to cuts here. And so this year, we did preserve that membership. If there's future cuts to Emergency Management, it will be to FTE and/or having to look at line items such as our RDPO membership, which John, John Wheeler is working on getting clarity because our understanding is that cost is actually going to be going up next year.
Next year.
Thank you. Okay. Facilities, Fleets, and Parks contains both operations and capital. And I'm planning to talk about both, but I'm going to start with Facilities Operations starting on page 94 in your budget book. In this current fiscal year, Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, which is fondly referred to as FFP, became a department with Facilities, Fleets, and Parks becoming- FFP, became a department, with Facilities, Fleets, and Parks becoming divisions thereof. Also included in this department is MPS, or Mail and Print Services, which was moved out of the Finance Department. I recognize that I already talked with you all about Parks this morning, and so we'll focus on Facilities and Fleet, and just recognize that this department spans two functional areas. Facilities, Fleet, and Parks maximizes the value and utilization of existing county assets to ensure health and safety, center equity and inclusion, and meet future demands by planning for total cost of ownership through board-approved capital plans, leveraging revenue-generating opportunities to offset expenses, extending useful life of equipment, vehicles, and buildings, and optimizing communities' use and access of county-owned or operated green spaces, parks, and buildings. The Facilities Division operates, maintains, and repairs county-owned and leased facilities and properties consisting of 1.9 million square feet of building space and associated grounds. The work of this division is accomplished through a blend of county staff and outside contractors. The Division has the following programs of operations, maintenance, and real property, and houses 65 full-time equivalent staff. This is the second year Facilities is budgeting as an Internal Service Fund, housed separately from the General Fund. They will receive a revenue allocation through the county's cost allocation plan that increases by a little over $155,000. Rental income is also projected to increase to reflect new lease opportunities entered into with external sources. The Real Property Team is doing a great job of leveraging space as an asset and ensuring that outside users are paying the cost of covering maintenance of the space for both new and existing lease agreements. Facilities has a proposed 3% reduction, and this is on top of a sizable reduction that occurred during this current fiscal year of over $700,000. This next year's reductions are being referenced as noticeable but manageable, and a few of the impacts include reducing custodial services a bit further, that many discretionary requests will be denied, so not painting or updating kind of paint. Furniture replacement that would be scheduled for replacement at seven years will become 10 years. There's a risk, of course, that building and equipment needs may not be met in a timely fashion, and it reduces set-asides for unplanned failures. This could also increase the workload for staff where contracted services are no longer affordable. It's worth noting that the increase in materials and services are almost exclusively related to the increase in utility costs countywide. The double-digit increase as of January of this year results in the need for an additional utility expense appropriation, but Facilities does continue to implement energy-saving strategies to offset the utility rate increases. New this year is the addition of a Safety and Security Coordinator, and this position will support workplace violence prevention, preparedness and training, and response capabilities that would coordinate all security functions. And I know there was a request for a little bit more background on this position, and so currently, there is not a dedicated position for this function. Essentially, what has happened is several staff and subject matter experts from across the county that include the Sheriff's Office, Risk Management, Facilities, Fleet and Parks, Emergency Management, Health and Human Services, Human Resources, and County Council all come together to form a committee of sorts outside of their regular duties to sort of try to handle and be this repository for incidents that occur or communicating incidents that are occurring, things that are safe, or things that are focused on safety, both for the employees and for the public. And I do want to note, just having a security coordinator, we are having a lot of discussions about the scope and complexity of providing a safe and secure environment and balancing that with also being welcoming, and sometimes those two things are a little bit at tension. We did have a security audit performed by an outside consultant. It confirmed that Washington County does have some gaps in workplace violence prevention, preparedness, and response, and that it's really difficult to address those with limited in-house resources, although the team that is working on this has done the best job they can. So the position would become a member of the Facilities, Fleet, and Parks Department and be responsible for providing the necessary leadership and subject matter expertise to coordinate comprehensive, integrated security and risk reduction strategies that include updating policy, procedure, training, and best practices. And it's also great to note that the security coordinator would work collaboratively across the organization to develop and implement a long-term plan that meets a range of needs.
If I can just add, this position has been at a staff level in discussion for at least the last two years, I can say, and we have not added it just because of our fiscal condition. This year, I'll use the phrase "time's up" on the importance of adding this. Our concerns from employees, concerns from the public, continue to rise, and ensuring welcoming and safe facilities, not just from the envelope of facilities, but the environment that we work in, community members enter, is incredibly important, and so this is a vital position.
Thank you. One last note about the other division in Facilities is the Real Property Division. Real Estate and Planning is responsible for managing all of the leased properties, as well as the surplus properties that end up in our portfolio in a variety of ways, such as tax foreclosure or remnant parcels from completed land use and transportation projects. They also manage land acquisitions for the county. We've recently added a senior planner to the group who administers space allocation requests and provides strategic planning support to the department. In this fiscal year, total revenues from the leased space should exceed $500,000, which represents an $80,000 increase over last year. Okay. Mail and Print Services on page 97 is a special fund that provides services to county departments and associated agencies, including the U.S. Mail, parcels, and freight deliveries. MPS joined the Facilities Division in late 2022. There are three delivery clerks, one print operator, and one supervisor. The external revenue is largely from state courts in the city of Hillsborough for both mail and print. Centralized mail and parcel services eliminates congestion caused by delivery trucks and creates reliably-staffed point-of-delivery rather than requiring the front desk staff at department level to be available for deliveries. Bulk mailings include A&amp;T tax statements, LUT land use notifications, Health and Human Services' public health information, for example. Envelope stuffing machine and the postage meter that applies the postmark also saves money from USPS. Mail and Print Services manage office supply ordering systems for departments. They maintain the fleet of copiers and printers, and they supply paper for us. They also prepare booklets, pamphlets, and business cards, and they've recently taken on signage and are working with contractors to get signs made for a variety of county purposes that include parking signs or sandwich boards, window decals, and restroom signage. They're also including language interpretation and civil rights signage as well. There are no reduction scenarios to this fund. Any reductions would need to be taken at the department level. Fleet Services on page 103 is responsible for the procurement of safe, dependable, and cost-effective vehicles and equipment, and the management and maintenance of these assets through quality service programs. They administer the county motor pool and all vehicle-related policies and provide full service repair. They do this with 20 FTE and have a fleet, handle a fleet of 750 vehicles. Some employees are represented in a collective bargaining agreement. Fleet is funded by fees charged to departments and other agencies. This next budget requests total revenues and associated revenue rates that are established each fiscal year to provide sufficient funding for operations and to maintain an adequate fund balance. They are also exempt from reductions because their expenses are directly tied to revenue and 100% dependent on client demand. And the contingency amount this year is within a range adequate to support operations and reflects Fleet Services' lean operations. Any questions before I move to the next section? Okay. So we're going to move to Facilities and Technology Capital. I'm going to talk about Facilities Capital, including the Emergency Communications System Fund and the Event Center Fund, then I'll turn it over to Marnie Kyle to talk about information technology. In terms of the use of the Budget Equity Tool across capital, as you've heard many times over the past couple of days, there was mixed results. The positive impacts to equity diversity and inclusion were demonstrated in programs that included a proposed increase in the Facilities Park System Development Charge, which results in provision of language access services. The negative impacts are in reductions in capital and operation funds that result in limited infrastructure and equipment improvements that may impact the county's ability to go beyond the minimum standards for Americans with Disability Act, or ADA accommodations. Facilities Capital Projects begins on page 347. Special Funds and General Funds are the primary sources for capital improvement projects housed in this fund. New this year is a $20 million transfer from the Strategic Investment Program, or SIP, which we heard about earlier. These funds will provide resources to address some of the critical infrastructure improvements, such as the HVAC, HVAC, some funds towards the ERP replacement project needs, a new courtroom that we also talked about yesterday, funds for the schematic design for the jail and community corrections expansion, and some funding to address departmental capital requests. In light of these allocations, the General Fund is not anticipating a specific contribution in this next fiscal year. The expenditure appropriation increases are primarily related to the proposed Center for Addiction Treatment and Triage, or CAT. The critical infrastructure projects and many of these will be moving into construction phase during this next fiscal year. There is a nice project chart of the Facilities Capital Projects on page 349 that lists the project and the projected funding, but I want to caution that it won't exactly tie back to the CIP as a reminder, because the CIP does not include any projects under $250,000. Another reminder is that the project continuation line toward the bottom of that chart refers to in-progress projects, and the amounts will not equal the project totals, but rather just the appropriations for this year. That is a good question. Let me get on here. That, I actually have a date. We're going to put it in writing, but that is scheduled for completion. I know that was a question Commissioner Committee Member Fai asked yesterday, but for June 15th, so likely it's done in this year and not on this chart. Okay. The Emergency Communications System, you'll find that on page 351. This fund accounts for the proceeds from the General Obligation Bond that was approved by voters in 2016 for the Emergency Communications System project to build a new 911 center, which is our Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency, or WACA. And the goals of that measure were to convert the existing 911 system to current technology, to improve the radio coverage by upgrading the current towers and installing additional towers, to strengthen facilities to withstand emergencies, to expand the dispatch center and other county emergency facilities, and to replace 3,000 analog radios at the time. They have successfully moved into the new facility, and in fact, I think I said this exact thing to the Budget Committee, last year, we're still, we're done, they've moved in, it's going well, it's just the end of kind of the punch list of updates that are needed. The team is finalizing that punch list, and I was going to tell you that just one remaining installation of the UV filter is needed and is scheduled to be done on May 30th, but got a note from the team that it's done and completed. So that's really exciting. Good job, team. But we're hoping to close this project fund out in the fiscal year. The Event Center, you can find on page 353 of your budget book. The Wingspan Event and Conference Center project is essentially complete, although there are a few outstanding issues that have arisen that are being addressed prior to the finalization of the project and the closeout of the fund. Their Certificate of Occupancy was granted in September of 2020, which, as you know, was right in the middle or the middle beginning of the pandemic, when significant protocols were in place to mitigate the spread of disease and didn't allow for the facility to function as intended. Even though the wingspan was used during that time as temporary court space, the delay in event and scheduling for conferencing caused issues with the HVAC and the AV systems to go unnoticed. The Facilities Operations Team is completing a recommissioning of the HVAC system to address programming errors, and that's being funded by the Energy Trust of Oregon. And the capital team just got $100,000 of carpet replacement for free from the manufacturer that was one year outside of the warranty. So that's also just really good work we appreciate from the team. They're currently working on flooring repairs that results from the building settling at the expansion joints. So the remaining funds at the time of closeout will be returned to the Full Faith and Credit Capital Fund for future projects, and that's possible because this debt was not project-specific The Building Equipment Replacement can be found on page 384. This fund provides resources for systematic replacement of various buildings and equipment components of the county's buildings. This accounts for routine like-for-like replacements or a modernization of existing capitalizable equipment and systems. Learning such good words from Laurel Brown. Large examples of these include like electronical distribution equipment, elevator modernization, HVAC replacements, roofs, and then there are smaller items, of course, such as pumps and supply fans. There has been a past practice of using building equipment replacement dollars to fill funding gaps in large capital projects, which creates some vulnerability that will not be able to make major system replacements in a timely fashion. The Building Equipment Replacement is funded through the cost allocation plan is based on a 2.5% of capital, and the reinvestment rate assumes a 25-year lifespan of equipment. And there are plans to evaluate this reinvestment rate with finance over the next year. Staff are also planning to return to your Board to discuss funding based on the Facilities Condition Index, which we've talked about a little bit today and yesterday. You'll note that a chart of building equipment replacement for the next fiscal year on page I think I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi. I wanted to ask about the discussion about the capital improvement plan and how it affects the facilities. I took a quick look at the page. It has the bonds that have been issued by the county and how much is remaining to be paid out, and it looks like in 2026, there's about 11 or 12 million that will come off the principal and interest will be paid off, and then into 2034 or 2035 for the rest of those to be paid down. What is our, what do you guys think is our total debt capacity to service debt right now, given interest rates? Has a study been done? And then what's the process for issuing new bonds?
It's 1% of AV. I think that's the right number, which equates to about $1.5 billion, which we would never go that high.
Mm-hmm. So is that like a state mandate that you can't go above that level?
Yeah. Geo-bonds are a little bit different measurement, but they're so high, and we are so, one of the things you mentioned earlier that I meant to mention in some of my comments is that the Moody's Investor Services, when they do the analysis of your debt, our debt liability is less than 50% of the median for other AAA, AAA-rated agencies. Our debt is very, our debt capacity is very high, and we're using very little of it.
Right. And, you know, one of the benefits could be with the debriding we have, that there could be a bond premium in selling the bonds that could benefit the county as well. So that could bring more cash in if we sold bonds. I'm just wondering what studies have been done, or what is the, I guess, the outlook for the county in terms of maybe issuing new bonds to help with the capital improvement plan? I know it's early stages with not even knowing your fullest what the cost would be yet from evaluating that, but as you get closer to these bonds rolling off and maybe the ability to time it with an election coming up, or I don't even know if an election's required. I don't know what the process is, to even approve a bond issuance.
So that is one of the tools in the CIP, definitely, and we are early into the process. And, you know, there's either cash, cash reserves, or debt.
And does that require to go through voter approval, or is it the Board?
It depends on which kind of bond. If you go to a general obligation bond, then you would like with a school building, would be a GO bond.
And that's required for voter approval then?
Yes.
So if I could add on to this, the Board has tasked our staff to... So if I could add on to this, the board has tasked our staff to go through all this foundation building.
Yeah.
Prior to this work of the last five years, departments would come to the board with a wish list or a master plan. We'd like to do, we'd like to do, we'd like to do. Boy, did we have a really interesting wish list. But we didn't have a lot of foundational information about the state of affairs. So kudos to this board for directing our CIO to go through the process of these assessments. And they've, some of them have just come out, right? But we also have been doing some strategic planning at the board level. The jail capacity study that has been mentioned, and that affects both the jail and our Community Corrections Service line. But we know we have to plan for a larger jail capacity. We also will be on the hook for replacing the courthouse. Another huge, big-ticket item. So you're with us at some of these inflection points where we can now look ahead with clearer picture as opposed to just being in the clouds or fog, and try to map this out and determine what sort of financial toolset we use in order to look ahead. So their big decisions will be on the Board of Commissioners' plate in coming years.
Yeah, that's good feedback. It does seem like there's a three-to-five-year kind of timeline in my mind of when I read through all this material about when you'd have enough information to make an assessment of should we do a bond or not, and then time it with an election.
Yep.
So just interesting to see all this come out in the presentations. Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee, once again, and Chair Everton. As a reminder, I'm Marnie Kyle. I'm one of the ACAs, and just want to share you are in the home stretch. There isn't end to this today, all these presentations. So thanks for hanging in there with us. So I am going to talk about ITS, which starts on page 109 in your budget. Before I get started, I just want to briefly thank and recognize we have our interim CIO, Luke, in the audience, and members of his leadership, Yuha, Kia, and Theme. And as always...
Who's running it, world?
I know. As always, I know. You know, but they do such a good job that they can be here because the world runs.
Cybersecurity nerds are watching.
Like all of my other presentations, I wouldn't be here in front of you, and your budget book wouldn't be complete without the efforts of this team, so.
Ms. Kyle, if I can just share to ease everyone's anxiety, our chief security officer is not in the audience, so we are, we are secure.
Obviously, we have a lower risk or something. I don't know.
All right. The Department of Information Technology Services manages and maintains the end-user technology environment. This includes business applications, internet, intranet infrastructure, as well as the county's website and the geographic information system, the GIS. It empowers the county's mission by delivering the trusted, innovative, technical solutions that provide our community members, businesses, and the county workforce with equitable, effective, and efficient services. The ITS department has seven program areas. First is ITS operations. This fund supports all the ITS functional areas, and it houses our chief information officer and ITS administrative support. The next one is ITS land, spatial, and digital. And this is not Star Trek. That's what I thought when I read this. I was waiting to be beamed up. But this actually is the program that houses costs of the internet and intranet technologies like the county website and the GIS technology, including our ability to do permitting and taxation mapping. So ITS enterprise is the third program. This program is responsible for the maintenance, support, and subscriptions of the business applications and the enterprise systems. You'll hear a bit more about that as I talk about the ERP enterprise solution updates that were actually complete redesign that is happening. ITS client services is the fourth program. This program accounts for the cost of ongoing maintenance and life cycles of desktop software and hardware used by our county staff. ITS security, who we just mentioned is not in the room, accounts for ongoing maintenance, information security support, and subscriptions, and auditing, and compliance with our systems. ITS project management, operating costs associated with implementation of the full ITS project portfolio. And finally, the seventh is ITS infrastructure services, ongoing costs that support the network server virtualization, cloud, and voice infrastructure. And this is one of the areas that you'll hear a bit of concern when I talk about some of the reduction impacts. So a little bit of information about the budget. Revenues increased due to an increased transfer from the cost allocation plan and direct charges to departments. In addition, there is a transfer from land use and transportation to support staff, a staff that's assigned to work on projects in that department. The proposed budget includes 1.0 FTE increase. The total FTE then would be 87.75, and that includes permanent staff as well as temps and limited-duration staff. Personnel also increases due, as you've heard from every, every one of our presentations, due to the cost of living increases. This is offset by the F.5 of that 1.0 FTE was combined with another position to make it a 1.0, and it will replace a PC bench build contract. So there'll be some savings there to support the increase in personnel. Starting in 2425, department-specific software licensing and maintenance expenditures were moved out of the ITS operating budget to departmental direct charges. Therefore, there's a reduction in materials and supplies of $915,965 that you'll see in this current budget proposal. So on to talk a little bit about reduction impacts. A reduction to materials and supplies of $58,560 impacts expenditures for printers, monitors, and software replacement costs. There is also a reduction to two software subscriptions. Also, in FY 2425, and this is the one that really concerns me, the building depreciation expenses allocated to Fund 518 is reduced by 95%, and a corresponding transfer to 242 is decreased by 94%. This change has a direct impact on contingency that ITS uses for operating, capital project, and replacement funds. So it's something that we're really going to have to pay attention to and address in the future.
Marnie?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, can you quantify that statement for a second? 95%? 94%?
Right. So there was a...
Dollar-wise, yeah. Dollar-wise, I'm saying, what are we doing 95% of and 94% of here?
So it was approximately $1 million, but I'll need to get back to you with the exact answer.
Okay. All right. And is this the department that also sends us, that provides us with the education for not being fished?
Yes.
So they train us, and then they send us bait?
Yes, they train us, and then they send us sneaky bait, and they pay attention to whether you're passing.
Yeah, I know. That's the reason I've had to go to class twice. So, but I do appreciate them. They do a great job.
I've gotten A pluses.
I almost didn't, I didn't pass. I had to ask Brenda, what is this? She said, double check, double check.
I got a yellow card.
So we can see how important that role is within ITS. And data security is extremely important because, as you know, businesses, including other local governments, have been held hostage really to phishing schemes. So super important that we keep striving for those A grades in this area. Whoops. This slide did not, this slide did not come across, and I can't do it from...
We've got it in the books.
Okay. Well, I don't know it from memory, so it does show. I'm sure that Luke would know it from memory.
Is it animated?
Yeah. Oh, is it animated? Maybe it was animated. Let me check. See why ITS support is so... There it is.
I'm like, suspense.
This...
My department!
Yeah. Thank you, Greg. You were ready to rescue me. So artificial intel, I don't think many of these will be a surprise to most of you. Artificial intelligence, they're working hard to get some guidance and a policy in place so that we can begin to benefit from artificial intelligence, but doing that in a safe manner. Right, absolutely. And then audio visual support. So recently, ITS has taken on audio visual support for the county. So like this room set up today and making sure that you could hear each other and that we could see. And they're also looking at conference rooms and making sure that we have the ability because we all live in this virtual world now where we're doing hybrid meetings. And then internet redesign. That is really working with some of our city and special district partners to look at our internet and making sure that it's safe and that the county's needs are met. And there are some changes that we're working on with cities in that area. ITS funding strategy. So as you heard, there's some areas that we're concerned about, especially when it comes to our infrastructure, servers, software, and making sure also that our hardware, that as you know, every few years, the world of IT is completely changed, and we will need to rely on that.
Ms. Kyle, before you move on to the gray, I just want to highlight, this has been a multi-year progress. This year, one of the elements that we have made progress on is just our laptop, PC depreciation or funding cycle. It was not fully funded before, which is problematic. So that's where I'm confident, while Marnie had said, you know, this is a concern, it's an area to watch, we'll continue to move through our IT strategy and systems with a sustainable funding option moving forward. We don't want to get to the point where we are right now with ERP, that it's 23 years, the software is not supported. And so the work we're doing from a funding perspective in the operational budget connects to our capital improvement plan.
Thank you. And then Horizons redesign, so really looking at, the Horizons is an internal website that we use for communication across the county. So looking at that and making sure that it is supporting the needs of our county employees. And then the last one on the slide is Workday, which is the ERP replacement, which I'm going to talk a bit more about. So, okay, yes, I did talk about reduction impacts earlier, so I can skip through that. So on to ERP replacement. So Washington County's current ER enterprise resource planning system is Wizard, has been operating for over two decades. However, it's not kept pace with the evolving needs of the county and the community. This has resulted in implementation of numerous supplemental tools to address employee workflow requirements. The patchwork of disparate solutions has led to inefficient and fragmented processes. By modernizing the ERP system through a partnership with Workday and Cognizant, as the system, Cognizant is our system implementer, so they're assisting us to implement Workday, the county aims to optimize and streamline processes. This will not only reduce costs, but it also will significantly enhance the organizational agility aligning with our one Washington County initiatives. The current system, as I said, it's an Oracle e-business suite solution that's over 20 years old, and various add-on applications have really contributed to the difficulty that we're finding. So the Workday was, there was a competitive process, and Workday came out as the vendor that we want to implement. And their core components will include finance, human resources, and budgeting. You can see this is a timeline of when we're planning to implement. So we obviously have kicked off, and they're really, right now, in that architect and configuration. They actually have, I call it the war room, where they're meeting key staff, including some department staff, to really talk about how do we implement this? How do we manage this large change? And what we heard from the vendors was Washington County is really doing it right because we've actually identified staff, Theme in the audience, who is really there to manage the change, to make sure there's excellent communication with staff and department directors, and that we're really managing the change. Because what we don't want to do is have a new solution, but everybody wanting to stick with their old processes. So they're doing a great job on that. So functional areas that will be included is project accounting and grants management, which we desperately need right now, fixed asset inventory, which you've heard a bit about, accounts payable, time and attendance, accounts receivable, budgeting, operations, personnel, and capital budgets, purchasing bids and contract management, payroll, general ledger, and financial reporting, and HR personnel management.
If I could, how did you put it, Commissioner Phi? Washington County is a beacon of innovation and efficiency. So I think this is an area that highlights that. Also, back two slides, just for the sake of everyone, this hyperlink goes to an internal webpage, so it isn't a hyperlink that this committee or members of our public can follow.
Thank you. So on to costs. So the total estimated cost for the project is $19.8 million. A significant portion of the cost is attributed to backfilling county resources who will be fully dedicated to the project. This is another star in the Washington County cap because in other implementations that have been unsuccessful, even failed completely, was because we were, they were trying to have staff take this on in addition to their full-time jobs. And so we've planned for that, and we're really between change management and backfilling staff. This will be a very successful project. This approach was supported by consultation through learning from other local governments, peer governments, and really kind of learning, and also from Ms. Angie, who's been through this a couple... and also from Ms. Angie, who's been through this a couple of times, what worked well and what didn't work in other jurisdictions. So the Workday subscription is 1.1 million annually and the Cognizant implementation cost is 5 million. That's a one-time expense. Correct, annually. And I don't know what it is now, but I believe with the efficiencies, this will be well worth the cost. Right. So you're saying my bar is low. Thank you. Okay, functional improvements that we anticipate seeing include, and I think, nope. So functional improvements that we anticipate are increased efficiencies. One of the ones that we're really looking forward to is integrating HR and finance data and functions into a single system to eliminate those data silos and eliminate redundancies leading to enhanced operational efficiency. Real-time data. Workday provides real-time access to data across the organization and really facilitating informed decision-making and up-to-date, using up-to-date information. Cloud-based deployment. As a cloud-based solution, Workday offers faster and easier deployment and maintenance compared to the current on-premise system and better maintenance as compared to the current on-premise system. Additionally, it allows for remote access and improved resiliency, ensuring swift response to any disruptions.
If I can connect some of the presentations. So our current system, when there needs to be system maintenance, it has to be scheduled, notified to employees, shut down, make the repair, and well, but we're on an Oracle platform, it's not being supported anymore. So we're not getting, so we are transitioning to software as a service so that 1.1 million includes ongoing updates that will be pushed out to us. We, of course, will need to schedule and their staff support needed with those updates, but those will be routine through the new model.
Marnie, I could tell you from my own experience, I'm going through an ERP implementation right now at my company and we don't have backfills and consultants, so it's really painful and a ton of work for my team and I to go through it. So I want to applaud the effort by the IT team and the finance team and HR and all the other functional groups that are going through this. I was keen to learn about these slides and ask some questions ahead of time about it. So I'm really glad to see this. This is great. And I think the return on investment will be huge because, you know, I used to work at Oracle, actually, and I know that they charge a lot of money for support and maintenance of 22% a year. And if it's unsupported, then you're at high risk right now of catastrophic failure if you don't upgrade. In your choice of Workday and Cognizant are best-of-breed, best-practice type vendors. We actually use Workday for our international subsidiaries for HR and payroll. So I know it's a robust system. So everything I'm hearing today sounds great and I don't really have a question, just a comment that it's great to see that there's an investment in this area. And having worked in high-tech for over 20 years, you can't innovate unless you invest. And so to see your slide with the arrows of some of the areas where there's innovation happening is exciting to see. And I would just, I guess, make a comment to the commissioners that when you have a chance to invest for innovation, you get a huge return on that investment. And I'm glad to see that happening in the IT space here.
Thank you. I believe that the ITS folks back there are maybe floating about now with pride and excitement. So I'm going to go back to the timeline. So the ERP modernization initiative began in January of 2023 and we used consultants to help with developing, starting with developing a needs assessment and then issuing the RFP in July. And as I've stated, Workday and Cognizant were awarded those contracts in January. So we're early in this journey. The project team in collaboration with Cognizant is currently developing a comprehensive strategy, approach, and project plan. The targeted project kickoff date is July of 2024. And then the subsequent 16 months will be dedicated to configuring Workday to meet the county's specific requirements. We anticipate testing in September, October of '25 with a go-live date in December of '25. So come see how we're doing in December. And that's all I have and I believe I have one more.
All right. Good afternoon. So you get to start your day with land use and transportation and end your day with land use and capital. So, super exciting for you. All right. All right, so earlier today, you heard me describe the Capital Projects Division within LUT. The Capital Projects Division is led by Russ Knobel, who's standing back there in Land Use and Transportation, which is led by Director Stephen Roberts. They deliver the transportation capital projects funded in this budget's area. And while Capital Projects plays a management role, all of the divisions really in LUT support transportation capital projects through the planning, design, and construction phases. I point out both Russ and Stephen because together, they have nearly 40 years of experience in Washington County. So we're really happy to have them. So this chart shows the changes in MISTIP and other funds, including the transportation development tax, system development charges, the North Bethany County Service District for Roads, the Urban Road Maintenance District earned, the road fund, state and federal grants, all for transportation capital. So we'll talk a little bit here about equity, but then we'll move on to it. But I do want to point out that on page 335, there are two tiny edits. It should say 5%. The amount is 2.5 million and it's not 7 or 3.5 million. So that was a typo. In terms of equity, one thing I do want to point out is that while there is a reduction in funding, any potential negative impacts should be rather minimal because the allocation and prioritization process will still be guided by the MISTIP equity framework and index. And so we'll talk a little bit about that more coming later. So MISTIP, so starting on page 354 in your budget book, please note that there's a handout that lays out more history and context of the MISTIP program and you can follow along as I talk about the program. The proposed budget includes a 5% reduction to the general fund transfer, which is tantamount to about 0.3% year-over-year reduction from last year because of the application of the assessed value growth this year of 4.7%. Please note, in an earlier version of the handout, there was a typo that stated 0.5%. And so the corrected version now says 0.3%. The dollar amount was correct in that handout earlier. So like WCCLS, we did not take this proposed reduction lightly. Despite this reduction, the county continues to support the program and its budget priority of a connected multimodal transportation system. MISTIP delivers on this priority by allocating projects, by allocating to projects throughout Washington County that help leverage other state and federal funding, deliver on our vision of a safe, interconnected, and multimodal county transportation network. This January, the Board of County Commissioners gave direction to approve $150 million in bonds to complete MISTIP 3D E and the cost-sharing projects. They took formal action on April 16th. The bonds will help complete, help fund completion of about 15 significant projects, including parts of Walker Road, Tuolleton Sherwood Road, Farmington River Road Roundabout, and Century Boulevard. The Board has also given very preliminary approval with hopes of an upcoming approval of 13 3F projects and set aside for Opportunity Fund, Bridges, and Project Match. Those projects could include Alexander Street, Highway 47, Fernhill Road, the 205th Avenue Bridge, Greenberg Road, Glencoe, and West Union Roundabout. The Board has also set forth a budget priority of support for major systems of county government, including the capital improvement planning, finance, information, and technology, and HR, you just heard about that. And this commitment to continue to look for sustainable and diverse funding streams through the adoption of the SIP, which you heard about. And this will include more than 80 transportation capital projects.
If I could, as much as I didn't want to, because, well, yesterday, after our budget committee ended, I made sure to read the answers to the Q&amp;A document that we received. Looking at more numbers and descriptions was like the last thing I wanted to do after a long day of our budget committee meeting. But I'm really glad that I did. I want to give a shout out to every member of the team who has been responding to our questions as well as through the incorporation of various bits of information into the presentations yesterday and today. But I also want to thank you for, on the previous slide, your, in the answers to various questions, laid out the certainty that taking advantage of a bonding tool provides for the project delivery. We're able to say now, when will those 3D, 3E projects be done? You know, still pending construction contracts. But it's, the cities appreciate that. But also, what's next? What has to happen in order to do that bond issuance? There is still work to do for staff to do all of that and gain approval from bond council. So I just hats off to all of you for laying that out for us in a really excellent Q&amp;A document.
Thank you for that. Well, so in addition to the excitement around the work of and the certainty that the bond projects and the bond strategy will bring, one of the things that I think is really exciting is that amidst this significant funding opportunity that the LUT staff continue to be really intentional and rooted in the county's values of equity and inclusion. The department is literally operationalizing this commitment through their approach to community engagement as well as project evaluation and allocation. The department has utilized mapping and data to provide deeper insight into the transportation need of Washington County's diverse residents. So for example, staff examine Washington County maps for concentrations of populations with regards to race and ethnicity, languages spoken, and income, and apply that analysis when considering projects. This approach is aiding in the pursuit of the countywide goals of both equity and a connected and multimodal transportation system.
Any questions on this one, our discussion?
That's, I mean, I know Chair, we're still moving to public comment, but that was, that's a huge accomplishment. Day one and day two, Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One presentations. Yay, team!
Thanks, everybody. This has been great. If that's it, then I think we can turn it over to Craig Moss for public comment.
Thank you, Chair Everton. So we did have one person sign up in the back in the room. Angela Sandino, if you want to come forward. And I'll, Budget Committee, I'll note for the record, we did receive written communication from OSU Extension that was emailed, including your packet. And also there is a video link submitted by the 4H Horse Kids that will be added to the packet as well.
Okay, well, I know we have a brief amount of time and we have just, Alan and I are here, but my name is Angela Sandino. I'm the Regional Director for the North Willamette Region for Oregon State University Extension Service, which includes Washington County. First, we really want to thank you for the support and also the time that you spend on your Public Budget Committee. We understand how many considerations you have when devising and planning the proposed budgets and including meeting the needs of the deficit, ensuring funding for state mandated programs, which also are meeting the many urgent and competing needs in the county. We've been very grateful for the partnership and support that we receive from Washington County. With last year's 10% budget reduction and this year's proposed 5% reduction, coupled with increased costs such as mandated staff SEIU bargaining agreements, continued inflation of all operational costs, and community demand for our programming, it does kind of put us in a difficult position. While we always work diligently to tighten aspects of our budget and pursue new funding opportunities, it does not entirely resolve the budget shortfall. As many of you are aware, Extension Service is in every county of Oregon as well as the confederated tribes of the Warm Springs. We have a long history of partnership with each county and Washington County is no exception. We work every day to partner with local communities to provide trusted expertise and science-based knowledge to address critical issues and help every Oregonian thrive. So four of our key programs, very briefly, we have family and community health and we partner in communities to promote healthy nutrition, food safety and security, and mental behavioral health, as well as being in multiple languages. An example that you might be aware of is we partner with the Washington County DHS and the free food markets to provide cooking and multilingual culturally-specific workshops and information to residents facing food insecurity. Another one of our programs you probably all have heard about is the 4H Youth Development. And that provides young people with intentional, high-quality learning experiences that promote meaningful contributions to the world. From robotics to rabbits, baking to beekeeping, we support youth in becoming the next generation of leaders. And one of our major examples of 4H is partnering with the Washington County Fair to ensure hundreds of youth showcase their successes each year. The third program we want to highlight is agriculture, natural resources, and forestry. We support grass seed growers. We keep family farms vibrant. We strengthen ecosystems and manage and prevent wildfires. An example, the Master Gardener Program. We have thousands of volunteers donating their time to reach Washington County residents each year through sharing expertise at farmers' markets, conducting speaker series, and providing hands-on workshops. The final one is Juntos and Open Campus. It's a community-based educational partnership that responds to expressed needs of Oregon communities. So you hear all these examples, I would like to also introduce Alan Taggart, who's the Washington County 4H Professor of Practice, who will briefly share the impact of 4H programming, if we have time for Alan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. I am Alan Taggart. I live in, oh, do you need me to pause?
Yeah, we just need a new two-minute, okay.
Thank you. So yes, I'm Alan Taggart, Assistant Professor of Practice with Oregon State University. I live and work in Beaverton, here in Washington County, and I really enjoy my work where I, the 90% of my job is to teach volunteers how to teach kids. I manage about 95 of them and they're going out into the community and leading the programs that we were just discussing. With that, there's a lot of opportunities because of the problems that youth are facing right now. We've got kids who are facing a lot of mental health crises as well as physical health and emotional health, ability to attend school. There's a whole thing about absenteeism that's been discussed at the White House today. And we really have the opportunity through 4H to combat those things, to be a proactive approach to help kids thrive. That's the model, that's the research as a professor with Oregon State University. The 10% of my job is to do the research to basically showcase that, yes, we are helping kids attain outcomes where they are thriving in their lives and where they showcase their success. Because in 4H, we learn about a thing, it could be any topic, from beekeeping to baking to rabbits to to rabbits to robotics, photography, all of it, and they move forward and showcase that in a public setting, which is usually at the fair. It could be in front of their school or anything. And so the opportunity with that is, we have a lot of resources that go into, I am paid by the state legislature through Oregon State University, and I have one staff member who is a full-time person to help process all of the things we need to run the program. So it's two of us running the 4H Club program. And this cut would significantly impact our ability to succeed in our programming. That $21,000 is, I know, in the grand scheme of the budget that's been discussed, is going to be a huge cut to us to be successful. And so I hope that you'll consider and also watch the 4H kids who shared that video and that recording with you. Thank you.
If I could comment too, Alan, thank you very much. You're doing a great job. Out at the fair, we, the fair board watches you interact with the kids, and certainly you have grown that program exponentially since COVID pretty well decimated our numbers, and certainly you have reinvigorated that, and you're doing a great job out there. So thank you very much for partnering with us. And yeah, the beard looks pretty good on you.
Thanks. Well, thank you. We had about 187 when I first started, and now we're at 395, as far as kids actually enrolled in the program in my two years I've been here, so thank you.
Great job.
We're working on it.
You bet.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else in the auditorium wish to provide public comment for the Budget Committee for up to two minutes for the budget presentations you've heard today? Not seeing anyone else in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment for two minutes on any budget presentation that you've heard today to the Budget Committee? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function? Not seeing any hand, Chair Everton.
Thanks, Kirk Moss. Any more discussion from the committee today before we recess? Okay. We are recessing the meeting of the Washington County SDO Number One Budget Committee until...
Nine o'clock tomorrow?
No, no, no.
We have an exciting lineup tomorrow. We start with the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol, URMD, Urban Road Maintenance District Budget Committee meeting at nine, followed by the North Bethany Service District for Roads, followed by the Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One Budget Committee meeting. So all three packets are posted on the county website. The only question I have is, do, are each of them time certain, or do they just flow?
We scheduled the ones in the morning to flow, and we, I believe, Kevin, we scheduled the County SDO Number One to start at one o'clock?
Yes.
Yep. So one o'clock would be a time certain after lunch.
Which is not provided tomorrow.
That's right.
I just want to make sure everyone knows that part.
Okay. Thanks. I'll try that again. We are recessing the meeting of the Washington County and SDO Lighting Number One Budget Committee until 1:00 PM tomorrow. Thank you.